Good evening, welcome to the Village of Westmont official voting board meeting for September 20th, 2010. We begin by having our clerk take the roll call.
Mayor Ron.
Here.
The clerks here, trustee Emery.
Here.
Trustee Fleming.
Here.
Trustee Forsley.
Here.
Trustee Klebenow.
Here.
Trustee Scott.
Here.
Trustee Seneca.
Here.
Manager Searle.
Here.
Attorney Zemanek.
Here.
Police Chief Mulhern.
Here.
Fire Chief Trout. Economic Development Director and Assistant Manager Kimball.
Here.
Public Works Director May.
Here.
Budget Analyst Parker.
Here.
IT Supervisor Liltzerberg.
Here.
Please join us in the fledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item before us this evening are the minutes of the committee, the whole meeting held September 2nd, and board meeting held September 7th, 2010. Do we have a motion?
Seneca.
Second, Emery.
Question. Roll call on the minutes, please.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Klebenow.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Present.
Trustee Forsley.
Yes.
Trustee Emery.
Yes.
Thank you, right along reports. As I mentioned at last Thursday evenings meeting, we would be making a presentation to the Westmont Citizens Police Academy alumni this evening, and I would like to do just that. However, before we make that presentation, I'd like to read a little bit of background information that was supplied to me by our police chief, Tom Mulhern. Now, this award is from the Illinois Healthcare Association. The Illinois Healthcare Association is a nonprofit organization comprised of more than 480 licensed and certified long-term care facilities and programs throughout the state of Illinois. Founded in 1950, IHCA is the largest long-term care association in Illinois. For 60 years, the IHCA has been a major voice for long-term care in Illinois. IHCA provides its members with timely, reliable, and concise information to advance their profession. They promote the many accomplishments that have been made on behalf of those residents needing assistance. The Illinois Healthcare Association recently held its 60th annual convention in Peoria, Illinois. On Wednesday, September 15th, they held a tribute dinner honoring the deserving recipients for their 2010 Volunteer and Staff of the Year Awards. Present at the awards dinner were alumni president Greg Pankey, Dawn King, Activity Director at the Westmont Nursing and Rehab Center, and our police chief, Tom Mulhern. The Westmont Citizens Police Academy Alumni Association was chosen as the winner of this year's Volunteer Group Award. The alumni were among 75 nominations submitted for this award. The alumni won for their volunteer efforts at the Westmont Nursing and Rehabilitation Center. The alumni has helped residents at this center for over a decade. Alumni members organize help and bring prizes to a monthly bingo. They help at special events such as Las Vegas Night, and are there to help during the holidays as well. Alumni members bring gifts and send cards along with providing donations of different items such as new clothing, magazines, cards, and books, just to name a few. Alumni members also adopt residents during the year and bring them special items such as strawberry shampoos and perfumes, other perfumes. Alumni members have participated in game activities such as the Wheel of Fortune and a beanbag toss game. More importantly, the alumni members interact with the residents of the Westmont Nursing and Rehab Center and have become family and add to the residents' daily quality of life. Please join me in congratulating the volunteers of the Westmont Citizens Police Academy in being selected as the Illinois Healthcare Association's Volunteer Group Award winner for 2010. With us here tonight are a number of the Police Academy Alumni Association to accept this award. Would you please come forward at this time?
Here with me are Debbie Keegan, Dawn King, Vivian Sharkey.
Jill Peterson.
And Jan Barnett. And they are also volunteers that help out at the center on a regular basis, so if you could award the plaque.
Assaulting an officer.
After much discussion, the first group to appear before the podium in the center of the room where it was supposed to have been when this building was constructed way back when. So, welcome. I'd like to read the plaque as follows. The Illinois Healthcare Association, 2010 Group Volunteer of the Year Award for enthusiastic and dedicated service, giving much and asking for nothing in return. The Illinois Healthcare Association recognizes the service of the Westmont Citizens Police Academy alumni on behalf of the residents at the Westmont Nursing and Rehabilitation Center. Congratulations to all of you.
I think you should be in the center because you'll probably put in more time than anyone.
Up here. Up this way. Right along there.
Thank you, and congratulations to all of you.
They do such a nice job.
That is all that I have at this time, moving right along our village clerk.
Well, I just want to give some information to our residents that will know, a former employee of ours that just passed away, Lester Mueller. The wake for Lester will be Thursday at Toons from 3:00 to 8:00 p.m., and the funeral is Friday at 10:00 a.m., again at Toons. Lester worked at the fire department and the building department for many years. A lot of us knew Lester, so condolences to his family. He was a very nice man, so.
And then I do have something more joyous. We have a trustee whose birthday is Wednesday.
Yeah, that's right.
And I'm hoping all his students will walk down the halls of the Westmont Junior High School and wish Mr. Forsley a very, very happy birthday.
Thank you.
I certainly do. You are a delight to be around.
Thank you.
And that's all I have today.
And what response do you have to that this evening, trustee Forsley?
Just a thank you very much.
Thank you.
I believe it's Wednesday, isn't it?
It is Wednesday.
Very good, congratulations. Next, our village attorney.
I've got nothing to add, thank you.
Our village manager.
Thank you, I have nothing as well.
Amazing. Moving right along. First item, 233 and 235 North Cass. Board to consider ordinances approving the following. A, special use permit request to operate a ground four office in the B1 Limited Business District. B, plat of subdivision to consolidate two parcels into one build of a lot. C, zoning code variance request to permit the construction of an office building which will encroach into the required front yard setback. A zero lot line is shown where code requires a five-foot setback. D, zoning code variance request to permit the construction of an office building which will encroach into the required side yard setbacks. A zero lot line is shown where code requires a five-foot setback. E, zoning code variance request to reduce the number of required off-street parking stalls to nine. And F, site and landscaping plan approval. And who are each one of these separately? Do we have a motion on point A?
So move Fleming on A.
Second, Scott.
Discussion? Hearing, no discussion, roll call.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Forsley.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Emery.
Yes.
Trustee Klebenow.
Yes.
Point B.
Motion to approve Fleming.
Second, Seneca.
Discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Klebenow.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Emery.
Yes.
Trustee Forsley.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Item C.
Motion to approve Fleming.
Second, Emery.
Discussion?
I think the only thing I don't like was the bringing it up to the zero lot line, however, for the extra parking. I think I'll concede on that. I don't like the look of that building being brought up with other buildings being recessed so far back, but because of the parking and the need for parking, I think we're going to have to concede on that one.
We were also told by staff that if there were a need to put table and chairs for a business that might want outdoor seating, that the sidewalk is wide enough at that point to accomplish that. So that would have been another good reason to set it back further, but as long as that is available, if some business should want that down the line, it would be there. Any other comments? Roll call, point C.
Trustee Emery.
Yes.
Trustee Forsley.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Klebenow.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Point D.
Motion to approve Fleming.
Second, Scott.
Discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Klebenow.
Yes.
Trustee Emery.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Forsley.
Yes.
Point E.
Motion to approve Fleming.
Second, Emery.
Discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Klebenow.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Emery.
Yes.
Trustee Forsley.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Point F.
Motion to approve Fleming.
Second, Scott.
Discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Forsley.
Yes.
Trustee Emery.
Yes.
Trustee Klebenow.
Yes.
Next, item, Westmont High School Homecoming Parade. Board to consider motion approving a request to close Cass Avenue from Burlington Avenue to Naperville Road along the east Burlington Avenue, from Linden to Cass for the Westmont High School Homecoming Parade on September 23rd between the hours of 6:30 p.m. and 7:00 p.m.
Motion to approve, Emery.
Second, Seneca.
Roll call.
Trustee Emery.
Yes.
Trustee Klebenow.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Forsley.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Eight and a half North Cass. Board to consider ordinance approving a request from Ms. Janet Archbald for the central business district development permit for a used bookstore and gift shop.
Motion to approve, Seneca.
Second, Emery.
Discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Forsley.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Klebenow.
Yes.
Trustee Emery.
Yes.
Fall Harvest Fest. Board to consider ordinances approving the following activities related to the operation of the Pumpkin Harvest Festival on October 1st, 2nd, and 3rd, 2010. One, issue a license to use amplified sound for the carnival, October 1st, 3:00 p.m. to 10:30 p.m., October 2nd, 11:00 a.m. to 10:30 p.m., and October 3rd, 11:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Two, grant a waiver of liquor license fee for the Knights of Columbus-Chamber of Commerce. And three, permission to use West Burlington public parking area for carnival staging.
Motion to approve, number one.
And if I can speak up, these were all put into one ordinance, so the agenda's incorrect in saying ordinances, so they can be approved as a block.
Okay, motion to approve as a block, Emery.
Second, Scott.
Discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Emery.
Yes.
Trustee Forsley.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Klebenow.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Constitution Week, September 17th to the 23rd. Board to consider motion approving a proclamation designating September 17th to 23rd, 2010, Constitution Week for the Downers Grove chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution.
Motion to approve, Scott.
Second, Emery.
Discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Forsley.
Yes.
Trustee Emery.
Yes.
Trustee Klebenow.
Yes.
Plumbing Inspection Services. Board to consider an ordinance authorizing a contract with Mr. Mike Chata for plumbing inspection services.
Motion to approve, Emery.
Second, Forsley.
Discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Forsley.
Yes.
Trustee Emery.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Klebenow.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Next item, Automated Traffic Law Enforcement System. Board to consider a motion authorizing the continued use of the Automated Traffic Law Enforcement System, parentheses, red light photo enforcement, with a subsequent review of said system in six months.
Motion to approve, Emery.
Second, Seneca.
Discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Emery.
Yes.
Trustee Forsley.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Klebenow.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Declaration of Village Property as Surplus. Board to consider an ordinance declaring certain village vehicles as surplus property.
Motion to approve, Emery.
Second, Scott.
Discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Forsley.
Yes.
Trustee Klebenow.
Yes.
Trustee Emery.
Yes.
Next item, Temporary Lifting of the Hiring Freeze. Board to consider motion to temporarily lift the hiring freeze to permit the hiring of a part-time, paid-on-call firefighters/medics to fill five of the nine existing vacancies.
Motion to approve, Emery.
Second, Scott.
Discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Emery.
Yes.
Trustee Forsley.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Klebenow.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Temporary Moratorium on Development. Board to consider approving an ordinance imposing a temporary moratorium on development in a defined geographical area near the intersection of Warwick Street and Melrose Street.
Motion to approve, Scott.
Second, Fleming.
Discussion?
I do have a question when it comes to the ordinance that the attorney sent. When we're talking about, are we also including in here, I think it's one of your whereas, the R4, R5, is that why you designated it in this one paragraph? I don't understand that total paragraph.
The part you talked about, you mean about the lot coverage, that section?
Yeah, currently set 40 percent, right, and then you're talking about coverage required for the...
The R4 and the R5 zoning districts do not have any maximum or maximum lot coverage requirement. It can be built out at 100 percent.
Right, so is, I'm asking, is a moratorium set on those R4, R5s?
The moratorium is set on all property within the defined geographic area.
No matter what they are?
No matter what the zoning is, there's no development allowed within that area unless you meet the exceptions listed in the ordinance.
And that would be the designated area we have here on the map?
That's my understanding, yes. You know, I had not seen that when I prepared the ordinance. I knew that you were preparing that, so that's why my email, I think one of the discussions tonight is, are the boundaries appropriate, and are the conditions in the ordinance appropriate?
Well, the reason is because I didn't know if the R4, R5, if we wanted to broaden that besides the one area, in case something comes up in another area, so we didn't have somebody in the process of building all the way out to the lot line, and then finding out that by the time it gets to a discussion, that we might have changed the percentage and ask them to do a...
So a moratorium as mapped, and also a moratorium on any, in any R4 and R5 districts?
And maybe R6, I don't know how many R6s we have, but I know there's one in discussion right now. But...
Fred, do we have any permits out in any of those areas? Either the mapped one, north side of town, or those zoning districts?
Not to my knowledge. I will double-check that with staff tomorrow to see what we may have in process or have received applications for.
Okay.
In answer to trustee Klebenow's question about the R6, I believe we only have a proposed R6 up at that property at Route 83 and 35th Street, but that's still under consideration at this point. It is not a very large property, nor is it in an area like the one that I think we're discussing tonight that's been defined as one that often floods.
Okay, okay.
Where would this put, we know that we have a problem in this particular area, and we all aware of that. So if we designate just this area, what's to say another area of town comes to us and says, well, you did it there, why don't we get the same consideration because we get flooding?
I think, and we talked about this a little bit on Thursday, I think it's a work in progress, and I think we will continue to look at other areas based on the feedback that we've gotten and what we've experienced, but I think this is very definitely the first step, but remember, we kind of talked about that. I think that's, we have to kind of look at other areas.
Yeah, I mean, I think part of the problem, I think part of the problem we had was too, was basically in the R4 and R5 with the lot coverage. It was one of the major problems we were having. Just by changing words in a sentence and a plan gave them the capability to be with, inside the code and not have to come in at all, or having to come in for a variance. I think that was one of the main concerns we had, especially on Burlington over here. I mean, I guess it's a question, you know, how do we, how do we actually say, you put this in place for R4 and R5, could it be in a situation until we come up with a lot coverage?
Well, the idea is put a moratorium on this, you're stopping development until you can study these issues.
Right.
Why this area is a little bit unique is because the R4 zoning in this area has been questioned by, I don't know, many residents or at least one resident, and the board, as I understand, it wants to give it some consideration and review. So the underlying zoning may not be appropriate, as well as the lot coverage, which will affect the village as a whole, as well as, you know, the flooding problems in this area. I think you can distinguish this area from the other areas in that you've got an underlying zoning question you want to look at.
And, you know, we've heard from other residents who have alleged, from a layperson's perspective, well, the reason my house floods is we had two teardowns down the block, and I never got flooded before you built those new bigger houses on those teardown lots. So this really is an issue that crosses all different zoning districts, if you will. It's a question of development in an area that has been clearly indicated to have repetitious flooding issues. And this is a response to the problems that we've had brought to the attention of the village board in this particular geographic area, regardless of zoning classification.
Similarly, you just hired an individual study for that region, and we're about to do an intense engineering look at that area, so to allow things to go on in there before you've got the results of that study is why this area is being singled out tonight, or why I presented, you know, you talk about the mapped out area, those are, you know, my thoughts based on the study that's about to start. So that's what concerned me. The area and the boundary in the yellow actually is the area of the watershed that drains to these problem areas, so everything inside the yellow boundary is somehow contributing to that, and the area in the orange is approximately the limit for the study. They do have to overlap and do some things at boundaries and like that as well. The blue dash line is kind of like, that's my line, that's the line that, anything that happened inside that blue dash line, I would have a concern with. The reason I left the, for example, the Ogden Avenue properties off, is that being the commercial and the redevelopment, they already do a one-on-one, unique stormwater management design for that property. It's forced on them under any development, so I'm not concerned about the impact on the watershed, because if anything, they'll improve it instead of aggravate it. So, you know, just speaking from my point of view, the area inside the blue dash line would be, you know, a minimum area, whether it was a moratorium or not, let's just say everything inside that blue dash line, the permittee would have difficulty with me, you know, proving that they, that their development doesn't have an impact. If they were going to propose any more impermeable area than they have already, so they would have a hard engineering permit to get through.
Okay.
John, can I ask a question on the second page, section three? Where it says, number one, the development or expansion is for a single-family residence home or a duplex residential home. Why did we put duplex in there?
That was my understanding of the discussion from Thursday in speaking to staff and Anne Marie, that there wasn't an objection to a new duplex use going in, provided certain lot coverage restrictions were met, as much as the multifamily. I may be mistaken, but...
Well, we're saying one thing here, but I think we were talking something else before.
Okay.
Or I think what we wanted to do was make it single-family homes for zoning in that area, and then all of a sudden we put a duplex in there, and it kind of takes it out of where we were looking at.
That's easy enough to remove.
Yeah, I think we should.
I'm okay with removing that. Yeah. Related to that is, it would only allow for development of single-family then, or expansion of an existing single-family, so you're not stopping a single-family house from expanding as long as they're within the 30 percent lot coverage and show that there's no adverse impact on flooding problems in the area.
Makes sense.
I know we discussed the 30 percent, but have, don't we need it to come and get to a vote quickly, or do we...
Well, for this, it'll be covered in this ordinance for this...
Yeah, I know, but I'm just asking on a thought of that, is did we...
I believe that was a 35 percent discussion at the committee level, yes.
Okay. It's coming.
What would happen is, this would have to go through planning and zoning, and it would be a text amendment to the zoning ordinance in one or more districts if you want to make it more restrictive to lot coverage. At that point, then you'd have to look and say, okay, are we going to lift the moratorium, or are we going to amend the moratorium and up that limit to 35 percent?
So right now, they still would be under the same rules if we have right now for residential, then, the 40 percent?
No, right now, if you're within this area and you want to build because of the severe flooding issues, you'd actually have, I guess what this is proposing is, you'd have to have a 30 percent lot coverage.
Maximum.
Maximum.
Okay.
If you want to change that to 35, that's your prerogative. If you want to change it to 40, that's your prerogative, but that's what I put down to be more restrictive and still allow a reasonable amount of development.
Okay, and, but we didn't have to go to planning and zoning or anything and get that done beforehand? Okay, and, but we didn't have to go to planning and zoning or anything and get that done beforehand?
Not for the purposes of the moratorium, no. But for purposes of a permanent, long-term change, yes, that's, you're imposing the moratorium so you can study that issue.
Well, then I guess the only question is, did we want to include the moratorium throughout the village on the multi, which is R four, R five, or six?
That we talked about before?
Yeah, I...
I don't know if this is the time or place to bring it up, but I'm going to ask in the future that we do a, looking at our zoning and stop allowing multifamily homes in the village.
Period.
Period.
Throughout the village?
I think we have more than our share, and so we have enough property and apartments out there in multifamily homes to satisfy a lot of people. It's not like we're all single-family homes and have no multifamily, we have plenty and we have lots of rentals. So I think looking into the future is something we have to do, is any new construction in the town, we want it to go to single-family homes.
Well, we have to, I think, put that on an agenda, because there are certain areas that may...
And it doesn't mean everything, because we're looking at buffer zones between, let's say, the tracks and residential or wherever, you're looking between businesses, that doesn't mean, you know, blanket everything, but for every, in the residential areas, I would say that has to be.
I was under the impression that we were going to have a moratorium on any building within this district, this outlined, our project one of the flood plan, because even if it's thirty-five percent, there are some huge lots in there, which would hold some very big houses. And I thought it was going to be a moratorium on building, period, that if anybody wanted to build, they'd come in before us, rather than just bring it down to additions are okay and thirty-five percent is okay. Because like I say, on Warwick, some of those little houses get torn down and some more big boys will go on. Thirty-five percent, they're fine, but their neighbors are going to scream till we get done what we need to do.
And actually, we're saying thirty percent, which still could be a huge...
Exactly, I think it's a moratorium on building, new construction, including additions, that can always come into the board, right, John?
Well, that was my concern, and when I spoke with staff on Friday after the discussion Thursday night, I did not like the idea of a hodgepodge approval process where individual owners come in saying, I know there's a development moratorium, but I want to develop, here's my plans, and there's no defined criteria for how you're reviewing and approving those. So what I tried to set out is some minimum guidelines, saying if you want to build, making the lot coverage more restrictive, not allowing variances, you have to comply with the codes and ordinances, and you have to meet a stormwater management test, it's got to meet Steve's, the Public Works' approval.
Well, then, that begs the question of, why wouldn't we just do the whole village moratorium to bring it down to thirty-five real fast? Because that's something that we've been talking about, is bringing down lot coverage to thirty-five, so why would we limit it to this area if people can go in and build thirty-five?
Good question.
One of the reasons, as I understand it, that this area was discussed is because not only was there a sediment to stop the development, this is a flood prone area, but also they didn't like the multifamily zoning in the area, and they wanted that changed as well, so we're studying a couple different things.
But like I say, still, I mean, I'm, unless we are, would improperly do hodgepodge, I don't want to see any building in that area till we get the flooding situation under control. I don't know about everybody else, but thirty-five percent may not cure a problem.
One concern is, you know, moratorium can be posed if it's reasonable and if it's being studied. I don't know how long it's going to take to cure the flooding in that issue, there's a study underway, which is going to take a while, there's money involved in any repairs. I think the goal is to do one area at a time as funds allow, but you may be looking ten years out, and I don't think you can stop development in the village for that long a time period, so...
Well, I just, the reason I raise this is that we certainly respect all the concerns of those residents, and to have somebody be able to say, I'm building a new house and it's thirty-five percent, and Dave Wisbrock is my next-door neighbor, and good luck to you, Dave.
A counterpoint is that you may have an equal number of angry homeowners who wish to sell their home to a developer if the economy approves, or own a vacant lot, and you're handcuffing their ability to develop and economically use their property.
Well, in that case, I personally would like to see it for this area then go down to thirty, because it would discourage it unless somebody's going to build a house that's not going to change a lot of footprint, and then if they want it bigger, they have to come into us.
Yeah, I think in here, did you say you had thirty already?
It is thirty percent.
Thirty is, yeah, it's thirty what's in here.
Oh, I thought it was thirty-five.
Thirty-five is what we're looking at for...
Just for this area.
Yep, this is thirty.
There we go, yeah.
Make it more restrictive.
Thirty or less.
And anybody building in that area could just be creating their own, besides a problem for their neighbors themselves anyhow right now.
Creating a problem for themselves.
On the other side of it is, it's going to have to pass the engineering test anyway.
It's true, all right.
If designed right, new development, as Steve has said many times, can actually improve flooding in an area, and, you know, engineering can force detention and restricted flow rates, and even a single-family house, even if on a large lot, they've got seventy percent green space, it can actually help the area.
Yeah. Are you okay with it this way?
Yeah, I thought it was thirty-five.
Is the twelve-month period okay?
Sure, I think it should be reviewed, because, let's see what happens with the study.
You can always terminate it, the moratorium sooner, if you have appropriate zoning regulations in place and/or if there's, you know, a flood control proposal.
I think we have to talk to planning and zoning anyhow about going into the future anyhow.
Yes, definitely.
If you have somebody that wants to build a house on a lot that's a hundred by three hundred, at thirty percent, they should be able to do that.
In this area for now.
I don't, I wouldn't have a big problem with going up to thirty-five percent if you've got a lot that size. It's a big difference, a different situation between that and a sixty by a hundred and twenty feet.
Right.
So, these are wonderful, wonderful lots for people wanting to build houses on, and to be restricted to just be able to put a small house on a beautiful lot, I don't think we want to be too restrictive, because there's still going to be a lot of green space.
It's not the green space, I think, that is the issue, I think it's because there's so much flooding in this area.
Also depends on where they're going to put the house, because we really can't allow them to put them up on the street anymore.
Right, right.
Because that's the flood area right there, that's why they put all the old houses in the back in the first place.
And look, some of them are back on the last fifty feet of the property, it looks like some of them.
So that would mean someone would have to decide that they're going to have all front yard and very little backyard at that point anyhow, just to keep out of the water.
So is that another issue, I mean, do we have to now identify a setback as well for that area that should be included in this ordinance?
Their grading plan would determine how far...
So that would do it, so it's, okay.
Because it is a bad flood plain, you know, so we know what it floods to and to what extent, it would get permanent.
Okay. So, so on a normal block where they haven't experienced a flooding, even though they might be adding to the problems, they can at least build up to the thirty percent, so at least we're allowing some kind of construction to go on.
Your honors, both economic development, I believe, and public works strongly believe that this blue line should be the area that we look at here for the reasons that have been previously discussed.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
That's fine.
Yeah.
That's where all the residential is.
What about, what about the question that trustee Scott proposed about single-family versus multifamily?
I think that's something we need to bring up, maybe not, like you said, this might not be the time, but...
Different discussion.
Quickly bring it up and let's have a talk, I think, I like the idea.
Next committee of the whole meeting?
That sounds good to me.
Sounds good to me.
We have to address that whole R four, R five issue.
Anyway.
Or I wondered if that would be a good subject for a joint meeting with planning and zoning.
That'd be a great idea.
We are approaching a rewrite of the comprehensive plan, so everything kind of...
Now's the time.
Gets woven into each other.
Unless you want to have the discussion beforehand before you have that conversation.
I'd like to have the discussion beforehand, so everybody's clear about which way the board would like to see it go.
Right. That's a good idea.
Now, is there a reason you don't feel that any of the properties south Ogden should be pulled into there?
I believe the Public Works Director spoke very eloquently to that trustee, that, you know, we do require extensive engineering of those commercial properties that are Zone B two on Ogden Avenue. And actually, we've got projects underway right now that are assemblages of existing pieces of property that may have never been previously engineered under modern engineering stormwater standards. By requiring that engineering site plan to be done on these newly assembled properties, we can actually deliver a slight improvement to the drainage of the area.
The scrutiny on that long that any commercial or businesses is already much, much higher, and they would, they'll have to go through the exercise of proving that, you know, it's not an impact.
But we've got a lot of old businesses too still in there, but you don't feel they're contributing?
It's not whether or not they're contributing, they are in the watershed, it's just that with or without any action tonight, they will already have to go through the exercise of doing their own self-contained stormwater management.
If they expand in any way, add on to the building, change their site plan?
The county ordinance will kick in.
Okay, yeah, I didn't, well, some of them I don't think were going to be doing anything, and I was worried that some of them have been there for so long that they, they may not do anything and they're...
My concerns are, like was mentioned, when you, you know, rebuild in a single-family lot, on a lot and use what's already in the code, no variances are required, there's no stormwater management, but you're, you're building a bigger footprint and you are impacting stormwater management by meeting all our codes. So there is no control on that, it's from a stormwater point of view.
Right.
Unless the study dictates, you know, something different or...
So we'll bring that up for discussion at the next...
We will put on the next committee of the whole agenda.
Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
Trustee Forsley?
Yes.
Trustee Emery?
Yes.
Trustee Klebanow?
Yes.
Finance ordinance number ten.
We have before us on this twentieth day of September, a finance ordinance in the amount of one million sixty-nine thousand, two hundred and twelve dollars and eleven cents.
Motion to approve. Seneca?
Second Emery.
Discussion on finance ordinance number ten. Roll call.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
Trustee Klebanow?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Forsley?
Yes.
Trustee Emery?
Yes.
Purchase order.
Motion to approve as a block for forty-three thousand, ninety-one dollars and nineteen cents.
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Trustee Forsley?
Yes.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Emery?
Yes.
Trustee Klebanow?
Yes.
We do not have a request before us for an executive session, so unless there are any other questions to be brought up, I would entertain the motion to adjourn at eight fifteen PM.
So moved, Emery.
Second Seneca.
It was a tie.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Emery?
Yes.
Trustee Klebanow?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Forsley?
Yes.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.